You'll recall that the mayor appointed a committee to look at the Landmark ordinance to address both will and perceived problems with the ordinance and its implementation. That committee met many times over the past, it's been about a year. And it kind of got to a point where we were ready to do something and then Brenda left us and I did some things and then Petrie came in and after she got kind of in order of priority things done, she was able to pay attention to redrafting the Landmark ordinance to address the input that that committee had provided. And I've went to all meetings and been talking to Petrie but rather than me trying to tell you what she did, she's going to tell you what she did. All yours.
Okay. I just wanted to kind of go over a little bit more in detail, just a little bit, of what I was trying to address in this draft. And that is, the scope of review is kind of one of the issues that seems to come up a lot, whether landmarks should be looking at projects that are to structures within the district that are older than, or younger than 1952. And there's been a number of applications since I've arrived for houses that are in the 1900 to 1952 range that are also questioned in terms of whether or not that should be something that the commission should review. It's basically 20th century structures that I think provides the most angst in terms of scope. Also in terms of angst is those that are considered not to be contributing and those are generally, you know, after 1952. There's a way in which the National Register Historic District is laid out is that you have contributing structures and then you have non-contributing structures. And we have been reviewing non-contributing structures and it oftentimes seems odd to be looking at those. There's been complaints about delays in the regulatory process. We meet once a month, something's urgent, then we can call a special meeting and have had to since I've arrived. But there is concern, I guess, that you can only meet once a month and so everything gets delayed if you're trying to move a project and if there is another level of review at your level. So anyway, they also would like, wanted me to see about whether or not we would have some level of administrative review to take the easier cases and leave with the commission the more difficult analyses to do. The key thing that info that you need in terms of looking at this ordinance is that you need to know that St. Genevieve has a landmarks register and that's, I provided that to you as you sat down there. And there's 89 structures or sites in those. The board adopted, I think they ratified a pre-existing list, but that was done in 1993. We'll talk a lot about landmarks and so it's important that you know that at a bare minimum, these structures which are the oldest and probably most important to the community are all protected under this ordinance. This ordinance would do nothing to change the importance of these landmarks. The two other things that you need to know is that there was a nomination for the National Register of Historic Properties and it's called the National Register Historic District. And I drew up here kind of the map of it so that you can see it encompasses the bulk of the downtown area. And I don't know why they did this, but when they submitted the nomination, the, there are outlining areas where there are landmarks. And so, in actually 1978, the board adopted an overlay, so they added this H2. And that was to capture Frank Meyer's house at 1007 Main Street and the Bernier, am I pronouncing it right? Bernier?
Bernier.
Bernier, sorry. My French is very poor. Those two properties, the Geese, Geese?
Geese.
Property at 61 Ann Market, the Chadwell property on South Gabary. There's a little cabin over on Boyer Place which is super neat. But all those were not in the National Register District and yet they're on the landmarks list. And so when we're talking about this, those three things you need to kind of keep in your mind straight and I think that will help. Currently, everything within all of this boundary that I've drawn, the green and the blue, are all subject to commission review now. Regardless of what it is, it can be, I just want to change out some railings, I want to put up some vinyl siding, I want to change out my windows, I want a new roof. Whatever it is, it comes to the commission. And I think that's where some of the issues arose. So in terms of the, I gave you all a memo that breaks all this down into nice easy pieces and even though the flow chart looks complicated, it really isn't all that complicated. The first thing that I sought to do was to reduce the number of structures and sites subject to review. And so instead of having every structure within the green area reviewed by the commission, the first order of business was to just do the landmarks. Well, you know, if you have this great little cabin out in the middle of a park and somebody wants to build, you know, a three-story house with a four-story garage right next to it, that's a problem. So the way the ordinance is written is that everything in the H2 is exempt from review unless you're a landmark or you're adjacent to a landmark. So now we've released all kinds of houses that ordinarily would have been reviewed or no longer reviewed. Everything within the National Register Historic District will continue to be reviewed. It may be reviewed by the commission or me or the administrator, whoever Martin appoints, but they still will be reviewed. Then we wanted to reduce the, kind of the project. And one of the big issues that comes up relatively often is, I'm just replacing something in kind. I have a, what is it?
Standing seam.
Standing seam roof. I can never remember that. And I'm going to put exactly the same thing back. Why do I need to go to landmarks? Well, because sometimes it's more complicated than that. And I'll give you an example. The Bolduc House came to us, they were completely replacing the roof, and they came to us. They submitted their application for a certificate of appropriateness and we bantered about what the materials were and tried to get comfortable with that. It's such an important structure, so we wanted to see it. The Beckett-Rabo House replaced their roof, but they didn't go through the process and so it looks great and it may be totally appropriate, but we never saw it because there is a different interpretation of what is an alteration and what isn't. So in the definitions, we break out, is it an alteration? An alteration is basically any change to a property, including in-kind review if you use in-kind materials on a landmark. Things like repair in-kind, ordinary maintenance in-kind, or repairs on a landmark that exceed 30% of the project. So if you were just patching your roof, you might not need to come to us, but if you were replacing the whole roof of a landmark, you would have to still come to us. That is how we dealt with getting away from those projects, getting the commission out of the, you know, out of the process of just when they, there's a replacement in kind, And like I said, there's an exception to this and that is a landmark. So you have Boyer Cabin and they want to put on, you know, a new roof, roofs are easy to kind of think about. And so it's more than 50% of a roof, so, I mean, 30% of a roof, so it would get reviewed. If the house next to the cabin also wants to put on a new roof, it would come to the commission just to make sure that whatever they pick, if they pick a purple roof and it's sitting next to Boyer Cabin, they're probably going to have some objection.
No, color's not.
Well, yeah, if color were being regulated, that is. So we will look at structures around the landmarks, but the landmarks will still undergo a fairly rigorous review. In fact, there's, you know, you can make the case that it's actually going to be a more rigorous review because now even repair and ordinary maintenance can come to us if it exceeds 30% of the item that you're replacing.
Petrie, can you define adjacent?
Well, that's a good question. And I have not defined it in this because I thought that might be something you all would want to banter about. We could do, you know, a point and circle around at 300 feet. We can say whatever properties are touching. That works not very well when you have a house across the street rather than a touching. When I went by all these houses, I located probably five or six properties around each of them that would be implicated, you know, in a general way. It's pretty much, it's more of a gut feel right now because you don't know what might really impact a landmark at this point. So that's, that's an area that we can easily change. It can be so many feet within the property or it can be adjacent. Adjacent to me is your property touches my property in some way, shape, or form. So that, that kind of deals with the project piece. Then there's this level of review. So when I was looking at the landmark ordinance, I read it in conjunction with the National Register nomination. And in that nomination, the, whoever decided to draw up this nomination from the board or from, you know, the powers that be in Washington, they decided that there were three areas of significance. Early French colonial period, the time after the French colonial period, and then the 20th century. They felt that the houses in the 20th century, and let's just say if you're going down Market Street and you see Blaine and all those little, nice little houses that are on Blaine, those are all 20th century houses. And they decided that that was important because it reflected something that happened in St. Genevieve. They reflected that there was this evolution of the industrial age where people were working in the quarries and they needed good housing, but it's very simple housing. So they declared that there was a period of significance between 1901 and 1952. Now, some people disagree with that. Well, that's not that important. I mean, you know, nobody's come to St. Genevieve to look at those one, two-room little cottages. Well, that's not the point. The point is not tourism. Tourism is kind of a byproduct of historic preservation. Rather, it's, it's more about identifying a time in history that is important to describing who St. Genevieve is. And with the prism of time, I think you have to understand that as we move forward into the 21st century, those houses that are in the early 20th century are going to seem more important, just like when they were building the Bolduc House back in 17 whatever, they didn't sit there going, well, let's see, in 200 years, it's going to be historic, so we need to really take care of it. It doesn't work that way. It's just a matter of time. So the level of review, I broke down into three categories, basically. Is it a landmark in H2? Is it a pre-1902 structure in the National Register Historic District? And that is covering both the first and second period of significance. Or is it adjacent to a landmark? And if it is, it's going to the full commission. If it's after 1901, it'll come to the administrator, presumably me for a while, anyway. And is it for a sign? I mean, I already regulate, I already look at the regulations for a sign, so I can easily apply the signs and then, then the board doesn't have to deal with the signs. At that point, I will determine, is, and this is where the big change occurs. All of this that takes place for full commission review is exactly the same, nothing changes. In the administrative review, I will look to see whether the house is a contributing structure to the district and if it is, I'm going to provide them information and we're going to have a talk before I'll accept their final application for a certificate. I'll provide them with information or guidance, why wood windows are better than vinyl windows, why vinyl siding is a bad idea, whatever, whatever information they're seeking, I will be able to provide them some information and hopefully have them understand a little bit better why this is so important for these type of structures. I think that the important thing to remember is that we're going to try to change the process a little bit so that people are more understanding. They're not just told, no, it's in the guidelines, you can't do it. They need to understand why that's important. Why is it important that we keep the wood windows? Well, there's a lot of reasons why wood windows are far superior than vinyl windows and we'll talk about it. But they may argue with me and that's great. I think that's awesome. But at least they'll have that dialogue that they're not getting now with the board. They're just talking a little bit at the board meetings, but they're not having a good dialogue, that I've observed. And then because the applicants often come to the meetings and, Teddy, you can confirm this, is that they're told, we've got these design guidelines that don't allow us to approve your project. And they're just looking at a book. They don't even know what the point, the whole point is. I hope that by doing a pre-application review, that I'll be able to at least give them some context and then they can decide whether they want to put in this or that. When it comes to the non-contributing structures, which is basically everything after 1952, I'm going to perform a lesser review process. I'm going to look and see if it's reasonable. I'm still going to talk to them, still going to try to see if they can try to repair in kind versus or replace in kind rather than replacing with a new and different material. But I'll use a reasonable standard. We'll talk, you know, we'll have a discussion about what they're, what they're planning to do. But because the structure is not a contributing structure, we have a lot more flexibility. And then if either in those, either two circumstances, if I would deny their certificate of appropriateness, they can appeal to the commission to hear their case. Likewise, if I am uncomfortable, say like I was, let's see, when was it? Oh, the mill. The issue with the mill came up and I'm like, I don't know enough to be able to say, I recommend this or I recommend that. And I would kick it to the commission. I would never make a decision if I thought the structure was so important or so, you know, complex that I would just take that on myself. I would ordinarily just defer it to the commission. So they can hear my deferred items and, and then if they, if they don't agree with me, then they can approve or whatever. And that's basically the framework that we're working under here. So we're lessening the structures to be seen and we're lessening the projects on those structures to be seen, but we're still providing with a review on the important structures, which is the landmarks, the adjacent structures to the landmarks, and those structures within the National Register Historic District. So that's, that's how it's going to go, if this is all about.
Petrie?
Mm-hmm.
Is there an opportunity, I don't know if there can be an opportunity, for someone to appeal the decision of the commission?
Oh, yes, that remains in place. They can now appeal to the Board of Alderman.
Okay.
That, that doesn't change.
I'm happy.
How'd you come up with the 1952? How'd you come up?
That's the period of, that's the third period of significance. Every, every structure that is before 1952 is considered a contributing structure.
Yeah, but how you come up with 1952?
That's, the National Register did. The people who were, that were preparing the nomination came up with that. And presumably through all of some, you know, some review process with the board and the commission. I mean, I don't think this was done in a vacuum.
Okay.
Okay. I have several things.
Sure.
Okay. First of all, you mentioned that there are different interpretations of the current rules.
Yes.
I think that is the main issue at, that every, or I won't say everyone, can't say everyone, that most people that come to landmarks and have issues, that that's their problem. Another problem, I think, is education. I was talking to somebody on the phone just yesterday and brought up something about vinyl windows, I think, on certain houses, if you're going to replace wooden windows, fine. He told me about this process of how he restored his wood windows from like crumbling to perfect and is able to use them. Well, I knew nothing about that. And anybody who, any landmarks meeting I've ever been to, someone comes up and says they want to replace their wood windows with vinyl windows, why aren't they told about these other processes? And maybe them going to you first will be a good step for that.
That's the hope.
Okay. Now, honestly, I have a big problem with a lot of this. And I'm going to state some of my concerns and also concerns of people I've gotten calls from in the last few days. Some of them are here, so if I miss something, maybe they can stand up and speak some more. First is the date of 1902. I think it needs to be later than that. My house is in the National Register Historic District, but it was built in 1910. I think whatever I would do to my house, or whatever the people that own my house after me would do, should go through a landmarks commission. That's my feeling. And there are many important buildings in that area that were built after 1902. The, and again, there's different dates on some of these, people argue about this, but St. Jen Winery, part of the Steiger House, the whole row there was Steiger Jewelers and the Oris, the hotel, Audubon, excuse me, the KC Hall. You know, I think those are very important structures that, let's say, you're perfect at your job, what about the person after you? I don't think in 20 years that, or any time, that we can say one person can make decisions on these important structures. Another problem I have is with the whole area in green, if it's a landmark or adjacent to a landmark. Again, we define that area, let's say it's 300 feet. I'm 301 feet away and I want to do something to my house that, I mean, I think there still needs to be a bigger review in that area because it's going to impact those landmark properties in that area. Let me see, what else I have here? Oh, is changing this, how is this going to impact federal funding that anyone might be getting right now for projects they might do in the H2 area?
As far as I'm aware, I contacted the state historic preservation officer who is really the contact person for us in terms of federal funding and also designations and things like that. She didn't have any objection to the idea that we were carving some of these, these properties out and that, she actually recommended I talk to the people in St. Charles because they allow pretty much anything that people want to do to their houses. They accept vinyl, they accept, you know, changes to historic structures and that's who she recommended I talk to. So, you know, I don't know about the federal funding. The landmarks, that doesn't change.
Well, I know, but...
The landmarks don't change and the National Register area doesn't change for federal funding purposes. Those landmarks would all be eligible for state tax credits because they're on a landmarks register. The house next door to a landmark, they're not eligible for tax credits even now because they're not on the register. So I think you have to, you have to really be careful because we are regulating still. We would still be regulating what happens to these structures in the National Register District, including your house. It might be to a different level of reasonableness, but it's still going to be a reasonableness standard. In fact, the standards that are laid out in the ordinance are exactly the same standards that were, are there now. So we're going to look at height and scale and, you know, what materials you're using and that sort of thing. That's still in the ordinance. It just eliminates really the Secretary of Interior standards and the higher standards of the design guidelines. The design guidelines, I can tell you in a nutshell what they say. They say, repair first. You can't repair, replace in kind. That's the rule. If you don't want, remember anything else, that's the rule. And so we're, we're saying that non-contributing structures won't be judged to that standard because they're not even contributing. And at the, at the contributing level under my review, they would still have to go through a process with me, and that's in here, process with me, in terms of understanding where we come from and why we think this is important and offer them guidance like on windows, you know, scraping windows, how do you scrape a window? How do you know if it's leaking? You know, why is there a crack in the, you know, the frame and, you know, all those things. We can provide them information on that. And then that way they can make a better decision about it. And then they can decide, you know what, it still doesn't matter, I want my vinyl. And, you know, I, all I can say is that that's how I'm looking at it, is that I hope to persuade them.
Okay. Again, I'm just concerned about one person.
I agree.
Having to say so.
Address that. Fortunately, Petrie has knowledge background and experience in historic preservation and that was a valuable skill she brought to the job. If she leaves and I'm in a position to have to replace her and can't find somebody with that knowledge background and experience, they won't be paid as much because they don't have that skill set. One of the things that I thought about in kind of anticipating that question because it came up in the committee was if we did fill the position with someone less knowledgeable and less capable of dealing with administrative review, we could contract for that because we're not going to be paying the person who's doing the day-to-day work what we would be paying for somebody with that background and we'd be able then to bring somebody who would be available to review the cases if they came in, but wouldn't be here full-time. So that would be one way of approaching that concern.
The appeals process would go from the, what do you call, community development administrator?
Community development.
To the landmarks commission, to the Board of Alderman, right?
Right.
So there is an appeal process that ends at this table or not?
If there's a denial, if there's a yes, it stops there. They get to do the work that they want to do.
If you're engaging in those things for which you're granted authorities to do administrative review and you say no.
Then they can appeal to the full commission.
Pailing, pailing to get an affirmative vote.
I'm not worried about how often a person in your position says no, I'm worried about how often they're going to say yes.
Say yes, right, right. There is no review for yes. You're absolutely right.
That's what worries me.
Right.
And then the landmarks commission, a new name for that, says no. Then the property owner can, has yet one left, one appeal left, to come to the Board of Alderman. Thinking about the untangible aspect of being reasonable, because we all think differently of what that means, right? Timeline. I have, we have a homeowner, a property owner that wants to make this, do something to their house and how long would it take for them to get the final yes or no?
Well, presumably, they would come to me and let's just say they come the first of the month. I'd put them on, you know, I would kind of pencil them in on the docket for the landmarks commission before I would review it, just so I know. But it could then be easily appealed. I mean, I would go through these pretty quickly, so they would know pretty quickly. And it would depend on the noticing requirements for landmarks, so I would try to get everything to...
So if they come in the day after the monthly landmark?
Then they have to wait, they have to wait a month. To appeal.
To get the landmarks.
Yeah, right.
And then to get on...
And whatever your next meeting is.
And then the next meeting.
Could be another week or...
Yeah, another week.
Could be another week.
Yeah, it should be the same week because you meet the...
Second and fourth.
Second and fourth and we, so like on the 17th of November, well, that's not going to work. Or, yeah, November's not going to work.
It could take five or six weeks.
Yeah, it could, it could.
Yeah.
But it could, I mean, in all honesty, if they had to go to landmarks without the administrative review, they still have to wait, you know, they don't, you know, or the next coordinating.
Listen, I want to staunchly defend our historic properties and the history of our community. But the whole reason we're here tonight is because frankly, the landmarks commission was very staunch in their approach to people's request, which some people would have considered unreasonable. So if we got the same people, right? Listen, sometimes people are just wrong. You know, you can't make an unhappy person happy by saying no, at whatever stage that no comes from. But the amount of time, the length of time that it takes is that reasonable, is it six weeks, five, six weeks is really just, it is what it is, right?
It, it wouldn't really add anything...
What do we do now? What do we require now? What do we require now? If someone is gonna sell a property in your blue zone, the National Register Historic District, is there any disclaimer that a realtor has to by ordinance?
Not by ordinance, by state law.
By state law? And they would know that this is what I'm getting into?
The owner, seller, and the real estate agent or broker is obligated to tell the buyer everything they know or should have known that affects their peaceful enjoyment of the property. So, you're in Landmarks District and you don't tell them that, that's a pretty major failure to disclose.
Still, same time, shouldn't we give them a brochure to give to the?
If we have knowledge that the transaction's taking place, but until the sale happens and somebody asks for change of occupancy.
No, but I'm saying, that should be good to the real estate people.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
True.
When I bought my house, it said, located in Historic District. Now, that's as.
That means nothing, right?
No, I think that's noted, that's noted to her that they're making regulation.
Yeah, it would mean nothing to me.
That should be noticed, that there is regulation.
I asked a question. If it says, located in Historic District, that's a flag right there.
But not to everyone.
You should ask a question.
Certainly not to everyone.
What does that mean?
Not everyone would ever know that.
Somebody might just say, oh, cool, we're in Historic District, okay.
Okay, good, I love it. It's in Historic District. They don't recognize, they may not recognize the responsibilities that they have by owning that home. Or the home 300 feet away from.
A landmark property.
You know, which is kind of the obvious, more obvious, this is a beautiful historic home, and I'm three doors down. But I think we just gotta make sure that somehow, by city ordinance, we address that, that there's some kind of notification that people understand. I think it would stave off problems in the future, if people knew that.
You know, like I said.
This is our opportunity to do it.
Yeah, I think that should go with the real estate. And when they sell something real estate-wise, they should be given this, and say, this is what you can do, or what you can't do, and this is subject to this and this.
I would only caution that there are transactions that occur that don't go through real estate agents in this town, a lot of them. And, well, I wouldn't say a lot, a few, you know, that we constantly are dealing with. And there's no guarantee that we'll know. We won't know at a tax sale, who's, you know, or.
We would know at the occupancy, request for occupancy, right?
But by the time they request for the occupancy, they've already bought the house.
Yeah, you're right.
So, I, you know, hopefully, there will be some, you know, education that goes on with the community through our resources.
We can hope a lot of things, there's a reality.
Oh, I mean, I don't think there's anything that would prevent us from giving materials to realtors, and we've had lots of realtors come in and say, is this property in a historic district? Yes or no? Yes or no is the answer, and.
I think so far, the key to me is how we define adjacent.
Okay.
I think that's a really big issue, and I think Beth has an excellent point, that it should be bigger. And I think I wanna have people tomorrow say, Tom, you're crazy, it shouldn't, I'm four houses down, but I'd be within 300 feet, why would I have to? But I think that's our duty, is to put protection first.
Right after I got elected, Alderman John Stupi said something to me that I've never forgot. He said, once we lose something in this town, we never get it back. And that's what I'm afraid of. 'Cause what some of these, what are maybe considered less important houses are gone, right now, they might be less important, but like you said, in another 50 or 100 years, they're gonna be considered significantly more important than they are now.
When you say less important houses, are you talking?
Well, we're talking like, you know.
Say, would she talk about on Blaine Street?
Yes, I do like that.
Or, you know, houses that were built between 1902 and 1952.
How many houses were built in 1947, after everybody returned from the war? A pile, right? So, the historic significance, those houses may not, probably not gonna be unique as far as historic, because there's, it's not, if they make a million stamps, that stamp is not collectible, it's not unique, it's not historic, it's just a stamp.
But it doesn't mean you wanna go cut up all your stamps.
Well.
And actually, the fact that these buildings are similar is what is important about them, that they all look similar, because they're all made of.
Not anymore, it's 2014, they've had all kinds of remodels.
Well, they're all repainted.
Yeah, all repainted.
But you still can tell which ones they are. You can still tell which ones they are. And I think that they will become important, because as we've grown old, I mean, you look at the 90s and the 2000s and the McMansion problem, which St. Genevieve doesn't really have, but those are gonna speak to our society 50 years from now. And so, I just think that it's not about whether the house has some unique architectural feature, it's about that the house represents a time in St. Genevieve's history. That's what it represents.
Okay. Let me throw just a little wrench in here, okay? I lived up on North Fitz Street, which my home was in a National Register home, so why, I don't know. They said a unique bungalow style that was built, there wasn't many unbilled, that's fine, you know. Enjoyed living up there so long. Then we moved out to Park Drive. Okay, now, one of these days, are they gonna look at the houses on Park Drive 200 years from now and say, oh, look at the way these houses were built? Now, you know, we can't do anything to change these houses, because they're brick and they got vinyl siding on them, so we can't, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Right, I completely understand. It will be a dilemma all over the country, especially with opposed to war housing.
It's just such a tough issue. I certainly appreciate all the work you've done at Martin and your committee and the current commission. I don't know, I don't know, there's no way you can appease everyone. I certainly see both sides of a lot of these issues, especially with nearby homes with no current label of historic significance.
Now, you know that that only applies to these 10 properties. It's not within the blue. The blue is still being regulated. It's in the green that is limited in the regulation.
Yeah, and please proceed with this discussion with the knowledge that there's no pride in authorship here.
No.
We're just putting in all the time, and you should listen to the citizens and consider your own point of view, and whatever you think is the best way to go, we'll change it.
I'm going with something that Beth said earlier about having one person review. It says the city administrator or his or her designee. I guess what I'm kinda concerned about is, on a particular day, let's say, Petrie, you're his designee, you're out, and then he does something that you're, I mean, technically is your responsibility to do. What I would like to see is, everything, you know, goes through you, since you're the designee, but anything you say does have to be approved by the person that, you know, so anything you say yes or no to, still has to get his approval.
Second person?
Right. That way, you two are on the same page, 'cause you two are the two that are responsible. He's responsible for making you the designee, but you're responsible as the designee. So, I would like to see, you know, both of you run it through each other, you know, that way, there's two minds looking at it, and that's a lot better than possibly just one, because we have had that problem before, where whoever was in charge made a decision, and they're like, oh, I don't know why she did that, or he did that, or whatever. Now, we got two people, and you're.
Beth's are pretty close, I don't think it's that much of a.
Basically, what you just read, it is the responsibility of the city administrator.
Correct.
So whatever his, whatever his designee does, is still the responsibility of the city administrator.
But I don't, but in her absence, I wouldn't want him to.
Well, I'm not gonna make a decision that exceeds my knowledge base, so.
He might kick every single one, hit by car.
But on the other hand, I am responsible.
Right.
And I am, whatever decision she makes, if I, if I empower her to make decisions without my review, that's my responsibility, and I have to take whatever consequences come with that. If we formalize the check and balance process, then that's probably not bad, and I will take that advice, and I think we could even put it in our forms, you know, it's, I gotta sign off on it.
Right. I mean, I think that would kinda alleviate what you, what I think you're getting at.
I had that written down, actually, as well.
And the only other thing I had on this whole thing is, on page like 13 and 14, they have where everything gets forwarded to Planning and Zoning, was that in the old one too?
Yeah, this is when you designate.
That would happen if you're gonna create another.
If you're gonna create another district, or you're gonna create, you know, that section is virtually untouched.
Okay.
So, it's about the designation of new landmarks or new historic districts. That's all that, those sections.
Okay. And I was like, I don't remember anything going through Planning and Zoning before on any of this.
Right, they don't.
Okay, 'cause that was another step, and I'm like, well, that's complicating it.
But you did, when you set up, well, I can't say that, I wasn't here, arguably, you did when they set up the Historic District Preservation.
Okay.
Including, probably, the 1901 to 1952, probably went through a designation process that was approved by Planning and Zoning, the Commission, and even maybe the Board of Aldman, so.
Okay. I misread that then.
Mayor, can you kind of explain about the process of what prompted this and the meeting that happened? When was that, three years ago, when you had St. John's?
It had been about three years ago, and you had multiple members in there on board. There was quite a few people, roomful of people. A lot of people got up, voiced their concerns about exactly what we're talking about, the regulations, and some of the things that they were required to get approvals on. Now, about half of that meeting, though, as you remember, really had to do with, and I think there's certainly that confusion and that education process that a lot of people get confused with. They confuse the building codes with the landmarks ordinance, and they blame landmarks for a lot of the things that are actually building code issues, and that's what certainly came out of that meeting also, was that half of the concerns were really building code issues and not really landmarks issues. But it was, I think the general concern that came out of that, that prompted the committee and to work on the ordinance, was exactly that, that they felt, that the community in general felt like that there were issues with structures, more so the later structures, that they just didn't feel like landmarks should have a say-so, a say-over, as far as what they did with them. And you got concerns of people saying that, especially obviously in that districts that we're talking about, there's a lot of rental property. And you've got a lot of people that, this is kind of a catch-22, that you've got people that, you've got a lot of landlords that are trying to make these, make a living on these rental properties, so they don't wanna stick a lot of money into it, they wanna make them as maintenance-free as they possibly can, so you're looking at vinyl siding, you look at things like that. And, but at the same time, if you had somebody coming along and somebody maybe starting in a neighborhood and really fixing one up very nicely, like it's supposed to be done and renovated, that may catch on too. But, I mean, for the most part, you still have a lot of rental property in the areas that we're talking about, and that's a concern that these landlords have happened to go with. They gotta go with wood windows, or they can't put vinyl siding on it, so they gotta paint, and they gotta do all of these things, which they don't wanna do. So you got buildings that could be going to hell, and not being saved, or the town looking like, you know, looking like.
You know, it seemed like there was 10 points that were brought up, and I can't remember all 10 of them, but I think one of them was to expedite the process, was one of the top ones, of the time it took, and how can we speed the process up and make it easier for the person to get approved.
The gatekeeper concept addresses that to, you know, a certain degree, and I really like that concept to try to catch the small stuff. But like we said earlier, it still was like, if it had to go through the full process of appeals, it could take five or six weeks.
Well, they're hoping that wouldn't happen, that they can get approval for something without going to landmarks, with every issue of a house in these areas.
That's the gatekeeper process.
Right, I agree with that. That was one of the things that came up, and that's one of the things that the committee looked at.
Absolutely right. And that's, you are right, that was one of the time factor. But, the other thing, and there's certainly, Frank's been back there, one of the members of the Landmarks Commission, you go back and look at how many requests have actually ever been denied, and you can, over however many years, you can probably count it on two hands. It's very seldom that things get denied. Now, whether people are just avoiding not coming, and because they don't wanna go through the hassle, or do it anyway, and hopefully you think that they're gonna get by with it. But it's, things usually get approved, it's just, again, the timeframe and the hassle of having to go through it.
I have a question. On the memo you gave us, for the example for Citizen B, basically, you know, the result is that the applicant insists the replacement of real wood windows was cost prohibitive, blah, blah, blah. They would still need a certificate of economic hardship before you would approve their C of A, right?
The certificate, if they, well, no, no.
If they say, doing these real wood windows is too expensive for me, that's why I wanna do vinyl.
I think the hardship is defined differently, is defined differently than what you're thinking.
I thought in the past, there was a certificate of economic hardship after, basically, if you were gonna say no, or. So, wouldn't they have to prove that it's cost prohibitive? Because in the past, anyone going to landmarks would have to, and would get denied, would have to prove.
I guess I view this provision as relating to what goes to the commission. So, the examples case, that didn't go to the commission, because it met whatever criteria is up there. And so, I would assess that situation, and the person wouldn't have to go through the whole economic hardship. That's the way I kind of understood the economic hardship section of the case. But we can clarify that, or we can say, you know, someone doesn't have to go through, and, I mean, I think this process that determines, you know, economic hardship is really onerous. You know, you gotta work with tax returns, and, you know, I mean, it's just, it's, to me, it's more onerous than them just going through the process. Honestly, I would just, I would like to eliminate that whole section, just because I do think it's awful, an awful lot for somebody to have to do to show that they can't afford it, you know.
Well, I know, but if you eliminate.
If they eliminate administrative review, that would be a commission.
That's only the commission, at the commission level.
Please don't eliminate that, 'cause if you do, somebody's gonna say, I just can't afford it, and they have nothing that they have to show for that.
And I can put back in for, you know, it to say, commission and administrative review has to go through this process too.
I think that would be good.
You know, and then we could maybe talk about what.
The only thing I ask for this, if someone said no to them.
Right.
And that triggers a full review.
Right.
And they should be informed before they go to the.
The commission.
Heritage Commission, that this is an option, if that's what you're convinced their claim is. But I think I agree with Beth, you know, it isn't just because they said they don't wanna spend the money. Lots of.
Yeah, a lot of people could say that and not actually ever have to show it, you know.
I don't have, I don't have fingers or toes to tell you, the people who appeared before commissions I have served and made that claim while they were driving their Cadillacs and wearing their Rolex watches.
Next question on page five, the historic district that's crossed out, is that replaced with the term H2 Historic District?
No, it's not replaced, it just happens to be in that order because of alphabetical.
So why are we getting rid of that?
Because, right now, the historic district in the ordinance is everything that you see up there. It's the green and the blue together is the historic district. I've separated them out to H2 National Register.
Okay. This is what some people are worried about with federal funding, if we no longer say we have historic district in our ordinance that.
It says National Register Historic District. It says H2 Historic Overlay. So, I mean, it's still there. I've just separated those out.
Okay, I see. This wasn't in red, so I wasn't getting that that was related to this. Okay.
And the landmarks, actually. And the landmarks actually is now specifically identified rather than a general, a general sort of description. We're very specific about what we're saying and not saying. So it just so happens H2 and the historic district, they're both ages, so.
Okay.
The one was not replaced either.
And I have one more question. What is this going to do? How is it going to affect our chances of the national park thing going through? Are they gonna say these people in St. Genevieve are reducing their scope of review for these structures? Maybe we don't want this to be a place where there's a national park.
Well, I can't speak, I really can't speak for what they're gonna do because I'm not, haven't been a part of that process. But I would say that you're still reviewing landmarks, the important landmarks. You're still reviewing structures within the national register historic district. The H2 overlay hasn't reached the national reg, I mean, the national register nomination does not include H2. They don't even know there's an H2. So if you eliminate the boundaries and say everybody in there has to comply, they're not gonna know it because in the nomination, which is what they're going on, H2 isn't even in there. Frank's house is not in there. The house is sixty, you know, these ten points, not in the nomination. So they don't even know that we have an H2 overlay. So I can't imagine that it affects us, but since we're pointing out that there are landmarks outside of the district and we're gonna protect a zone around them however we define it, I think that's a good thing. Rather than including a whole lot of structures that really don't contribute to the historic district. Does that make sense?
That makes sense.
I was worried about that too when I started to think through it and, you know. The nomination, by the way, is this thick. It includes all the houses, I mean, every structure has a description that's in the national register district. Eight, like eight hundred of them, isn't there Frank?
Yes.
Like eight hundred structures. I don't think by eliminating a bunch of houses along Market Street that were built in nineteen twenty is gonna affect the eight hundred structures that already make up the city. Those are the, that's where they are, those and the dots. Could more dots be added? Absolutely. I can think of ten that I would like to add. I'm sure Frank could come up with another two. So we can add to those dots if we want to, but we're not encompassing all the more modern houses now.
So if Frank already knows the ten and you already know the ten, maybe we shouldn't proceed without considering those.
Well, I think, and I think that that is the next step, is to determine whether the list of landmark is complete enough to fit into this regulatory scheme. If we want to nominate other structures, I think that that is perfectly, I mean, that's within the purview of the commission. Nominate away, do it.
So if someone's in a non-contributing house that is next to a house that may be nominated to become a landmark house in ten years, do they then, all of a sudden, all of a sudden, they're just in the purview of, okay.
And they shouldn't be surprised because they're in H2 now. I mean, it won't have changed that much for them anyway, but, but they, you know, and I don't think the level of review for the adjacent structures is as rigorous as the actual landmark. You're just wanting to make sure that those adjacent structures don't take away from the landmark. You're not gonna be monkeying around with little details. You just want to make sure there's no negative impact.
Now, one of the concerns that I've heard tonight and before is that as time goes by, you kind of got this moving target and things that you might not have thought of being significant today, twenty, thirty years from now, you might think that they are. My response to that is that this is a dynamic process and so we don't, because you adopted it today doesn't mean you can't, as she says, add in the future as you get this sense that there are other things you think worthy of protection. So it's, it didn't over just because you adopted amendment to it.
There's a whole procedure in there for, and that hasn't changed. You can still designate, commission still reviews it, still goes to planning and zoning, and you can add to that list wherever it is, to the St. Genevieve landmarks. You can't add to the national register district without a formal nomination, but you can certainly add to the St. Genevieve register, which would also make it eligible for tax credits, so.
When they start the process for nomination, does the homeowner start it or does a committee start it? And if the homeowner does say, yes, I want to be a landmark, do the neighbors, are they notified too?
I would imagine that if you're, I would say, if we had, I would say, I don't know how it worked here in terms of how the district was identified in the first place, but it was. And so I don't know if homeowners had an opportunity to say, I don't want to be in your district. Take me out of the district. But I would think if you're gonna go individually designate someone's house as a landmark, it's gonna be a whole lot easier if they're on board with it.
Well, that was one of the issues that came up before.
There may be better minds out here that know the answer to that.
There was a lot of people that did not know they were in a landmark area and in the district.
When you're doing a big district, I think you're not gonna get the consent of every homeowner in that district.
It wasn't consent, they didn't know where the boundaries were or if they were included within the boundaries of H2.
Well, they were noticed just like anything. That district came to the board and that part was noticed.
Not now. You're talking about when it was developed. I think Ted's talking about now, right, last year.
Now, I mean.
Last year.
It seems like there's, you can find two or three different boundaries if you really look.
Oh, yeah, the status of our maps, I will just tell you right now, it's, we are having, I am having a really hard time really identifying the boundaries because we don't have good maps. You know, I'm doing the best I can and I know what is definitely not in the national register district because they would be, had been identified. So that's the important point. But the maps that we have are not great and we could really use, in conjunction with this, a whole new map that would show you this, so.
And that's probably best done with either pictometry, which we're currently working on, or a single GIS system, probably pictometry, to create an overlay that will clearly delineate the boundaries.
Unfortunately, when we created the H2 and the H3 boundaries, yeah, H3 is actually anything not in there.
The rest of the town.
Yeah, the rest of the town. It says, for boundaries, see the map attached. So I go to the ordinance, guess what's not attached? The map. There's no description of, there's no verbal description in writing of the boundaries. There's only, you see the map you have in front of me? If you can read this and tell me what this is, please let me know. I'll tell you what, I'm just having a heck of a time figuring out, and I don't even know if this is accurate. It doesn't look even that accurate to me.
The lines and the dots basically cover like two little city blocks.
I know, they're too, they're too big and it's, and this should give you an idea right now and I think this is where you're concerned. This is the national register district. All those little numbers, those are all the contributing structures within the district. You're covering so much territory here, but I'm too old, I can't read that. And I, we need a better, we just need a better map so we can identify these structures.
Anybody wanna make any comments? Mr. Hard?
First of all, you can get a map.
Come out, please. Being televised, I don't remember who you are.
My name's Bill Harden. I'm the executive director of the Missouri Alliance for Historic Preservation. First of all, if, since you are on the national register and you're a district, you can request a map of your national district from the National Park Service, which is where the national register is kept.
I understand, I understand that.
So, so you should be able to very easily get a map of your historic district.
I would certainly hope so, but I've gotten crickets, so just so.
One thing, a couple of flags that I've seen as a preservationist in your process. And one is that, you know, your overlay district, your H2 district or whatever, your local historic district, that's not, that's not a national register historic district. That's a district that you all passed as a board of aldermen. It's a, it's a, it's a city law. It's an ordinance. And those design guidelines are a part of that ordinance. So they are a part of the law. So, I don't know, I guess what bothers me about hearing, about hearing somebody say that, you know, they're gonna try to convince somebody not to use vinyl windows in that district, but if they want to, you're gonna go ahead and let them do it anyway. It doesn't jive with your law. Your law states in those, in those design guidelines that that's how it has to happen. So I think, you know, and I'm not telling you what to do, but I just think that it's, that it's probably better for you and will cause less legal problems if you kind of redesign your guidelines because they are a part of your law to, because they, because obviously you're gonna have to change the ordinance that you've already passed in order to do your local historic district. Does that make sense?
This repeals the prior law.
Right, right, so, so there is an ordinance written that's repealed, to repeal it? Okay, okay. I just, I haven't seen, I haven't seen the law.
And the design guidelines still would apply to the land, anything on the landmarks and any contributing structure in, you know, basically that is, that is before nineteen oh one. Those would still apply.
But most of your buildings are not gonna be landmarked buildings that are in your national register historic district. Most of the buildings in St. Genevieve were probably built before nineteen oh two and nineteen fifty-two.
Yes, yes.
So.
You're not cutting out a lot.
No, you're cutting out a whole lot because those are the ones you're exempting from the review, from the landmarks review, right? Then you're gonna be doing it instead of the landmarks.
No, only those after nineteen oh two.
Right, right, which is when most of the buildings were constructed between nineteen oh two and nineteen fifty-two, I would assume, in St. Genevieve.
No, there's very, very few actually.
There's a lot of houses.
Well, after nineteen oh two, there's, we tally them.
You got two hundred seventeen in the national historic, in the registered district, you got two hundred seventeen.
That are not contributing, is it Ted?
No, they're contributing.
That are contributing, yes. Only eighty-one are not contributing.
No, you get dates. It's not after nineteen, it's not after nineteen oh two.
Right, nineteen oh two is what you're saying, is that if they're after nineteen oh two, they're not gonna be, they're not gonna be held to the same standards as your landmarks, which are pre-nineteen oh twos. That's what you said anyway.
And that's like three hundred properties.
So that's a substantial number of your buildings in St. Genevieve. And the reason that buildings are eligible and are contributing resources in the national register is because they have what the National Park Service calls integrity, which means they still have most of their original design features, elements. If you go arbitrarily letting people put vinyl windows in a nineteen oh two building or a nineteen oh three building, it will lose its integrity. So it could be potentially take, deleted from the national register of historic places. I've seen it, I've seen it happen before. And, I don't know, I just, I think that you, that you need to very carefully consider your guidelines and the level of expertise that the person has who is doing that initial review to make sure that they're definitely well-versed in your preservation law and what the Secretary of the Interior standards are, because the Secretary of the Interior standards are the basic, there's ten of them, it's not like a big book of guidelines, but there are ten basic premises of what constitutes a historic building and what, and what, what's appropriate for a historic building and what's not.
The committee that met struggled with this issue and tried to kind of figure, is there a day before which or after which we should be concerned or not concerned? And lots of dates were bandied about during their meetings. Is there a date, do you think that's possible to say, okay, if not nineteen oh two, nineteen thirty-two?
I mean, it's, again, it's totally up to you what you want to do, but like I said, and the nineteen fifty-two date is not an arbitrary date. The, the, the basic age criteria for listing on the national register of historic places is fifty years. So basically, the national register will, and they've made exceptions because they have, because there are certain buildings, even though they're modern and they may not be fifty years old, maybe the work of a master or maybe so rare that they warrant being included on the national register of historic places. But fifty years is the age criteria that the, so the federal government, the National Park Service, enlisting buildings on the national register says, if it's fifty years old or older, it can be considered for listing in the national register of historic places. Again, if you were, you were talking about how you wanted to make it easier for property owners, for landlords to, to do what sounds like, you know, maybe outside of your, of your current guidelines. You know, I don't know, maybe, it seems like they would already know that they're in a historic district before they, you know, before they buy their property or before they want to do those, make those changes to their building that might be inappropriate. But, you know, people come to St. Genevieve because this is a historic town. I'm from Perryville, I'm from the next town over. I know, it's not the same thing.
You can't, that's a hell of a statement. People come because it's historic. People come for a lot of reasons.
People, okay, people who stay here have a choice of ten bed and breakfast ends, historic ends in St. Genevieve. In my hometown, there are two. So that should tell you right there that a big part of your tourism and the money that you get from tourism is because you're a historic city. I just hope you don't let that slip away in your, in your guidelines and haphazard guidelines that you might impose with a new historic district or actually are new guidelines for your historic district.
But our homes are slipping away. If I'm gonna buy a house for rental and I'm not gonna spend any money on it, and I know it's a historic district, I'm not gonna go to landmarks and ask to put in wood windows to restore the house. I'm not in it to restore it, I'm in it to make money. So what happens to the houses is they sheep be deteriorating.
If, no, why is it right?
They're just falling down because they're not being maintained. So how do you fix that problem?
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement.
Do you have a building code?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, so that's, a building has to be, you know, deemed safe by the building code enforcement people and if it's not, then you could take the owner's to build it.
But being safe is different than restoring the house to the way it should have been, you know.
Right, like I said, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Like I said, I'm not trying to tell you which, how to run your business, but I'm just telling you that, you know, that people appreciate St. Genevieve because it is a historic town and that you, and tourism dollars are because of that, because of that historic district, because you recognize that you are a historic place and you promote your town as a historic place.
Look around.
Right.
I would only reiterate again that the national register district still will be reviewed.
Right, but I heard you say that you were gonna tell somebody what was appropriate and what was in the ordinance and you were gonna argue that they should not put in their vinyl windows, but you didn't really.
I would argue for them to consider.
But you didn't say that you would, you didn't say that you would, you would say no to the improvements.
I didn't say I would say no, it depends, it depends on the structure.
Because that's what's in your, that's what's in your, in your design guidelines right now. It's, that's what it says that will happen. That's what I'm just getting at, you know, I just want you to make sure that you don't get into trouble. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
I'm Bob Mueller and I live in the historic district. And I think you need to realize that we, we don't really have a national register historic district. We have a national historic landmark district. And all of, and that was established in nineteen sixty. And in that district, all of the buildings in that district apply. And in that district, all of the buildings in that district apply. And I think somebody said we couldn't get historic tax credits if you weren't a landlord. That's not true in a landmark district. And that's what was said. Any building within the National Landmark District, which probably was the H1, can get federal and state tax credits, depending on what you're doing. Some things that were said here tonight are very appropriate. Anytime somebody's come to town, such as Ed Mueller, and they wanted to talk about restoring a house, they said, go down and see, at that time it was Brenda Schloss. If you look back at the problems we've had so many times, it's people getting into a project, and then they realize, A, I had to have a building permit, and B, there's some things that apply because I'm in the historic district. I really, I like that thing that, that you've been talking about of going to Petrie first and talking about the project. That eliminates a lot of the confusion later on. I do agree with Bill, we do have, by ordinance, we've adopted in 2002 the, the standards, and they are our standards. They, they were based on the Secretary of the Interior standards, but they are ours. There's been an evolution of this whole landmarks thing, starting from about 1960 with that federal declaration of this being a Historic Landmark District. We did add on H2 later on, but it's to protect those houses that are out there. I think, when I look at my area down here in the, in the downtown area, and one of the things I did a couple of years ago is I looked at the houses that were existing in 1911, and, no, not houses, buildings, in 1911, in between, um, Gaborie and Jefferson, Main to, uh, Third Street, I guess it was Second Street. There was like 175 structures in there. When we looked at it 100 years later, there was only, I think, 40 buildings and five outbuildings. There used to be 115 outbuildings, and when you talk about the fabric of our architecture, those outbuildings were important. They weren't all outhouses, I can tell you that. When we looked at, from what happened between buildings in the downtown area that were built between 1902 and 1908, we have like the Eagle Bakery Building, we have Elmo Dunsey's beautiful Queen Anne, uh, there's just a ho, the hotel was built during that time period. Just about all the buildings right down here on the corner of, uh, Third and Market were built during that, that time period. And we know, we know that because we have sandborne maps which show what structures were here in those two years. I really think, and I know I recommended to Beth when we were talking about this, that you look at what buildings were built during that time period and see if you really want those to be just on a general acceptance level of anything after 1901. I, I think, when I look at the fabric of our downtown merchant area, there was a lot done in this area in that time period, 1901 to 1911. And I'd really like for you to consider, consider that.
Bob, are you saying to take the, the H1 district and, and make it, maybe Bill, you're saying the same thing, is, is keeping the H1 district a, a whole commission review?
Well, I think, I think it has, I, I, I think that you're kinda on, maybe on dangerous ground, since it's a National Historic Landmark District that encompassed not just the ones that are on the Historic Register. There's only, there's only, uh, one or two houses on the Historic Register. The Bolduc is a historic landmark, landmark, then there is the, the, uh, Jacquey Boardhouse, and I think the last one might have been the Academy. The rest of them, there's no need to go for a National Historic Register designation because they're within this district.
Right.
So, I mean, it's, it's an important area, and I'd just like for you to really consider what you're, what this level is of when you're gonna be allowing someone to make a decision versus taking it to the landmarks.
Right, so I have kind of the same question as, are you saying, do you have a magic date before which or after which you think it can be reviewed administratively or shouldn't be reviewed?
Well, one of the things, it's very difficult to determine when buildings are built. And we're very lucky to have sandborne maps from 1894, 1901, 1911, and 1929. The first three only go for the immediate downtown area and maybe out towards Le Hay and places like that. So it, it's probably the most difficult thing of determining when a house is actually built. But I do know which buildings were here in 1911 in the historic district. We know what was here in a lot of them in 1929. We can compare those, it's really a schematic of the building, you can compare what it looks like now and say, is that the same building that was here in 1929? And I've looked at pretty much the downtown area, and I can tell you a lot of them, which ones have been built at least between 1901 and 1911. So there are some ways to kind of take general era, time periods, but not specific years.
Didn't you say everything within H1 is, nothing's changing there, the only thing we're changing is H2?
No. In, in the National Register Historic District boundaries, um, anything that is a, is a pre-1902 goes to the commission, or if, if it's a landmark in H2 or an adjacent structure or adjacent property to the landmark, that goes through full commission review, just like it always has. Nothing changes about that. The only change is on the National Register, the blue area, is, is the administrator would review anything post-1901 and signs. Um, and that would be an administrative review. And let me just refer you back to page 19 and 20. It says administrator review, and it lists, it lists, um, 12 considerations of those, all of those are in the current ordinance. Um, we've cha, the only one that has changed is the architectural details one, and it talks about being educated first. Um, and hopefully the education would persuade some people to, you know, try to keep the character defining materials that are existing. Um, but the, but the issue of height, proportion of windows and doors, relationship with building masses and spaces, roof shape, landscaping, scale, directional expression, architectural details, signage, streetscape, ADA compliance, and non-contributing structures are all part of, oh, my review. It's not just reasonableness, it's, I gotta look at height, proportion of windows, are we changing the window openings, the fenestration, are, is something in the front yard versus the backyard, those kinds of things. It's not just a, gee, I think it's nice, let's do it, it's, I gotta look at these things.
I think what I'm trying to tell you is, I think there's a difference between the National Historic Landmark District and what's required in that versus what you call the National Register District. That's, those are not one and the same.
Well, I don't know the boundaries of the National Landmark District, and I have not been able to find anything that tells me that. So if you have something, that would be great.
I will look back through my history.
Okay, good.
But, your concern has been expressed, and, and the question I have is, what process can you envision that would address your concern, but also address the desire for more expeditious handling of these cases and more flexibility?
I, I think there are things that maybe Petrie should review. I think we need, I'm kinda talking about the time level or timeline of which ones I think should get more of a review, and I don't, I think it should be 1912 versus 1901 or 1902. That's my, that's my personal opinion.
Okay.
Okay?
There's no magic to the number.
Shouldn't these things been discussed in your committees?
They were.
Okay.
But most people, most people don't know when buildings are built here.
You're listening to the citizens.
Yep, they just don't know. And it's one of the hardest questions, and until, till you start really look, digging in to find out either through a newspaper article that the house was built in on this site, or you can sometimes do it through tax records, which is real tedious, or you use these sandbars, sandbars to say, this is the time period when these houses were built.
Well, I think what we had planned to do was to take the nomination and go by the dates that are on the nomination. Now, we can have an argument about whether circa 1900 meets the 1902 standard or the 1900 standard, but if it says built in circa 1900, commission's still gonna review it. If it's, if it says 1903, commission's not gonna review it.
Necessarily, they might.
Necessarily. I mean, if this were in place.
Well, I guess my, my only contention is, the commission, and under this new thing, the commission will review any change in the National Historic Landmark District. Is that correct?
The National Landmark District is not a part of this ordinance. The National Register Historic District is, which, and, from what I read, so sued the landmark district.
It's bigger. Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
I'm gonna go with whatever you say, Bob.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not an expert. I listen to the commentary, and I'm not disenfranchised. I just don't understand what you're talking about, because I have no experience there. And I look in the room and I see people that, in my view, do know what they're talking about, and, and they have legitimate questions that we need to answer.
They should be addressed.
Yeah.
I agree.
So, I'm gonna stick with, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm going with Bob. I'm done.
Bob, you wanna write a new ordinance?
I'm gonna, the last one. I'd like to contribute to it, I mean, that, I think it's important, this, I agree with Bill, that this, this is part of our economic future that we're dealing with here. And I know people do not like to be told what to do with their property. About five or six years ago, the foundation put out a guide for homeowners in the historic district, and it listed all the ordinances, and it listed how you go to the landmarks, and it listed the historic tax credits that were available. And it's difficult to get it out there, because as, I, I think Petrie said, not every land transaction in this town is done through a real estate office. And the only time they're gonna find out, unless there's a deed covenant on the deed, that there's a, a restriction on there, is when they come to landmarks or wanna make a change. I just, we, we struggle with how to get the word out that you need to, if it's on the exterior of the building, and it's either a special building that's outside the landmark district that's been designated, you're gonna have to go through some kind of approval process. And I've always found that if people come in first, talk to the person here at City Hall about what they wanna do, and learn a little bit about the guidelines. Petrie's the expert on the guidelines. It makes it a lot easier than when you're halfway through the project.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. My name is Kathy Grusling. We live on our Second Street. We moved here, owned property down here for 10 years, and we just moved here six months ago. We were, you were asking about, or he, one of the gentlemen mentioned the code violations. Are those enforced? Around the corner from me, I, we live between, um, Second and Jefferson. Jefferson is like Slumlord City. Doesn't anybody ever, I know this has anything to do with Petrie.
Well, it does.
No, it does.
Well, does it? Because I, it just, it bothers me.
It's not the topic of tonight's meeting.
I know it isn't, but it was mentioned earlier, and I just, who do I go to to address that, or who?
Give me a call.
Okay, because it's ridiculous.
We do, we do our best to...
There's a whole block that none of these buildings are maintained, and we have this beautiful city.
Yeah, just, just one comment.
Yeah.
We have a maintenance code, and we apply it to the best of our ability to the structures within the city, and all we can do is cite people. We don't have any authority other than to cite them for a violation of the code.
Okay, so if they're cited and they don't do anything, don't you go back and...
Then they go before the municipal prosecutor, then they go before the municipal judge, there's this whole process.
Yeah, that's what I was, yeah, that's what I had, where I lived before. I just was curious as to why these buildings got to the way they are.
I agree, there is a substantial part of downtown.
Between Second and Main, I...
There's, uh, a lot of issues.
Yeah.
And, and, yeah, we need to get off the horse and get out there and do something about some of this stuff, and start the process. I understand the process is long, but we need to get a little more proactive on some of those properties.
I wanna make another comment. You talked about the timeliness of all this. I, I think if you, there's not that many applications that come in, and, you know, you could maybe just have a meeting on call, or whenever you get one or two of them in. I, I know it's a volunteer organization that serves on the, on the landmarks board, but that might be a way to speed up the process. I think if, if everyone agrees what decisions Petrie can make, subject to review, uh, you know, I think that, that will help speed it up. But I, just take a look at how many applications you've had over the last few years. I mean, I, I think the records go back to at least 2002 that I've seen, and there's not that many of them. And as somebody said, there haven't been many no's over the last four, 13, 13 years.
But I think a few of the no's were quite controversial.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, so they became big issues.
Right.
And that's the only reason we're even talking about this stuff, is because of those, the ones that became bigger issues.
Well, I think it's important in any, any process that we're dealing with the citizenry, we wanna make it as expeditious. And I think the other thing is fairness and consistency. When you look back, I mean, that's the one thing that gets you in trouble, it, the landmarks votes one way, one time, and it looks like you're dealing with the same issue as somebody else, and then they get a different decision, and then you get all of this, well, he knows that person and that. It's very important in dealing with these things that you are fair and consistent over time period. And I know they kept records of the votes, of not who voted, but of what the decisions have made. And when you're going back to look at, or making a decision, you're supposed to justify why you're making that decision, and you can use it based on the standards and, and your past fairness and consistency doctrine. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, Ed Moore. We have the Francois Bernier House currently, which is actually the fourth house that we've cleaned up in this town. The rental houses are a serious problem, very serious. There are too many of them, far too many of them, and too bad of condition, in conditions people shouldn't be living in. Some of them around us have no window glass, they're appalling. I know that's not, that that's in our historic district, it's an issue. John lives near me and drives past some of this, I know he knows. The landmarks committee, I think one of the things that might help fix that problem is going out to people's property. I don't know if that, if you can, I don't know how, what the rules are for that. But if they saw what they were making a ruling on and what was near them, that might help, because it seems like the people get in front of them and they're not sure about the condition of the porch posts that they wanna change to vinyl, or if it's appropriate, or how architecturally important they are, or if they're just a nondescript post. So if, if somebody from their group went out and reviewed those houses in person, I believe that would make a difference. When they get on camera, they would look more professional. The Board of Adjustment, I've been going to some of these meetings, Petrie knows, just to see how things go. Those guys did their job really well. Somebody from their group went and looked at the house, the gentleman wants to tear down, it's across from us. So they asked the right questions about the house, about the property, they did a pretty good job of their task, so. But somebody went and looked at what they were trying to make a ruling on in person. And some of the houses you want to exclude from your thing, the bungalow-style houses, the craftsman-style houses, they're valuable houses. Anywhere else, they'd be protected. If they were in Kirkwood, Webster Groves, we have family in Florida that are restoring bungalow houses and getting awards for it. So where you cut off your thing, I don't know. We have, I've been told we have Sears &amp; Roebuck houses in this town. That's a valuable house. That falls outside of that date that you wanna put on things. So it, it's a gray area. All this stuff we're talking about is a gray area. Some of the rental houses are actually valuable houses that are being run down, so I just think you should consider all this stuff before you make a final decision. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't want to get into the details. I've been through the details enough over the last few months that I really don't want to go over those again and you, you people know them. But what I want to do is try and make one point. Historic preservation is extremely important in this town. I'm a newcomer here. I came, I moved here in 1982. When I moved here, it was a mess. The streets downtown weren't fit to drive on, the sidewalks weren't safe to walk on, people were falling down, smashing their heads. The telephone poles were sit out from the curb. There were no, there were no decent streetlights. It was a disaster. Now, think of what historic preservation and the importance that the country places on St. Genevieve. Think of the things it's done for us. We've got the downtown streets and utilities worked over both the main part and North Main. We've got the, we've got the levee. The levee didn't stand a chance until such time as we brought in the historic significance of St. Genevieve. It had a benefit cost ratio of, I think it was .13. For every buck you spent, you got 13 cents in benefits back. But we were able to push through the importance of the history of St. Genevieve and we, we were fortunate. We got, we got the levee money. And that was a significant thing that we would never have been able to afford as a community on ourselves. And think of the stuff that has been, I mean, I hear other people saying, well, the whole town has fallen to pieces. Now, kind of think of what the things that have happened. You've got a number of bed and breakfasts. You've got the Main Street Inn, which was just unoccupied. You've got the Southern Hotel. You've got, well, there's about three or four other ones. You've got those. The Deval Building. It's a nice office building and a pleasant thing on the street now. The plans for that were to tear it down and make a parking lot for junk cars that the sheriff's department was hauling off the road. Historic preservation saved that. I mean, we went to bat and we, we got them to change their mind. The repairs to the jail in the Chamber Commerce Building, that was a grant that we got from the state, through the state, to make the repairs. Right now, think of what, think of the two big projects that have gone in town. The hotel building and the rosier building. Those things are an important part of our history and they are being brought back, not the derelict structures almost that they had been. You can, I could go through and list 20 or 30, but I don't want to take up your time on that. Don't be in a rush to change the rules. Do them right. What we miss more than a revision to the planning and zoning laws is some planning. What is it that you want the city to be? Do you want it industrial? Do you want it commercial? Do you want it retirement? Do you want it residential? Probably a little bit of all of that. But you've got to have some plan as to what you want to be if you're ever going to get there. Once you've decided what you want, then revise your ordinances to make it come about. And that's more than enough. Thank you for listening.
For those of you, Frank was one of the members of the committee, so he's certainly heard all of the arguments and the discussions about how we got to where we are.
I certainly agree with Mr. Myers that we don't need to rush into making these changes. It sounds like there's a lot of questions, very valid unanswered questions that we've got to try to work through and get to bottom of and help, you know, the few people understand the proposed changes. I think there's still a little disconnect on what we're looking at and maybe what they might think it is. Well, I read it, I read, I think I read what you were saying and I think maybe some of the citizens didn't quite catch that detail because they didn't maybe have access to it. I don't know.
It was available.
Pardon me?
It was available.
There was a couple of things, you know, that I figured out tonight from looking at that that I didn't quite understand from the full ordinance, so.
It's hard to read a regulation, an ordinance, any abstract. It just doesn't, there's nothing related to, I appreciate that.
So something like that really helps, visually helps us see process.
So let's, let's kind of enumerate the questions that you'd like to have answered as we.
Well, I see Petrie has taken notes the entire time. I think she probably has.
I'm a compulsive note catcher.
I captured that better than my short-term memory can provide. What more do you want from the board this evening?
What do you need to see in order for us to put an ordinance before you that you feel you can vote on? Can't vote on this one. What is it about it that you think we need to change?
There were several things. I still think that the biggest issue is going to be, it's not contiguous to the property of the.
Adjacency.
The adjacent, what that means, how that works.
What about this time, building age issue?
I think that's an issue.
I'm going to go back to what I said. I want to listen to Bob. I don't know. I don't know how to determine.
Well, you're uncomfortable with this 1902.
I'm not saying you should come up with the answer, but you think something other than that needs to be addressed, needs to be included? Or not?
I think that should be further discussed by people that really know what's going, what they're talking about. I don't know. I don't know how to, I don't know how to determine what that number is. So I'm going to look to you and Petrie, when you make the presentation to the board and listen to the comments that, yeah, I think we're closer to where we need to be, I'm going to be happy with it. If I still hear the comments that, no, you know, listen, they're still, we need to look at this harder, then I'm not going to be happy with it.
Can I just interject one little point because we haven't talked about this as a possible way to deal with this. Nikki Kenny called me and she apologizes for not being here, but she expressed a lot of the same concern about the date. And she thought that maybe the way to handle the date, instead of having it pre-1902, post-whatever, that it would be at 100 years. If it's 100 years, then anything newer than 100 years. So 1914 would be the year.
Currently, 1914.
Next year would be 1915. And in that way, the, that handles the evolution of time. You pick up more buildings as time proceeds and that may be a way to handle it, to say.
I like that idea.
And that way, you're capturing a large percentage of the, I think the structures that Mr. Millen was.
Bob's concerned about, yes.
Yeah, was suggesting. And in, in 40 years, you'll have picked up literally everything.
And then 40 years.
You know, and so that may be a way of dealing with that. One issue that I think nobody has really brought up, and I guess maybe it's because all in the details, but this issue of repairs and ordinary maintenance and whether you're satisfied that if somebody comes in and does a repair or proposes ordinary maintenance and it is that they're using materials in kind, that they don't really need to go to the commission any longer because they're doing exactly what the design guidelines say you're supposed to do, which is repair or replace in kind. And then that, I think that would solve a lot of the instantaneous issues that come up, like when somebody comes in and says, I want to put a roof on it. It looks exactly like, oh, why do I have to wait three weeks to the landmarks? And of course, they're going to approve it because you're replacing it in kind. So maybe it exempts people if, you know, they are doing what the guidelines say to do.
I have a wood porch I want to replace that's the same.
Yeah.
Kind of porch.
You will not know the nature of the porch.
Right. That, you know, I agree, that should be an easier process than it is now, something like that.
How would that be policed?
Well, because most things, they have to come in for a building permit.
Okay.
And that's one I catch.
That satisfies me.
You know, people come in, they call me, is this in? Is this, do I have to do it? It's in kind.
Everybody's still got to come in and apply.
Yeah, and apply.
It's just a question of whether the application takes them.
No, I can buy, you know, we can bypass the process.
It's a two-day review or requires an embargment?
So I just want, we had never talked about that piece and I think that's a really important piece to this whole equation. And the problems that we've had with people not understanding why they need to come if they're doing exactly the same thing that was there.
I guess so, the other.
And if that's something that people are comfortable with, that's going to help go one way, so.
It seems like there's concern about the level of review in the, whatever we call, what do we call it, the historic district, the landmarks district. First, we need to figure out the differences in those boundaries. And second, about the, the level of review in that particular area. Seems like maybe something we want to revisit. Okay. Anybody else? Anything? Thank you.
I think it's.
Oh, I think it is. I don't know. It's like with us. Putting on this.[1577.24]